Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring this meeting to order. At 7:00 PM, Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11th Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Call to order, we have roll call.
Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Scares. Mr. Warren. Dr. Miller. Mr. Davis.
Present. Thank you. If you will, those who would like to entertain, joining me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. For those who can and would like to stand, if they're able, don't need to leave me to do the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any items?
To be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add the resolution for Southern Virginia Mega Park to new business as item number 12B.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none.
Let's get that motion and the second on there.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
I have a move, motion by Dr. Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barber. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to 7A.
No, you should move straight to 8.
8. Thank you, Counselor.
No, we have to approve the consent agenda.
Say again.
I approve the consent agenda.
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Warren for the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blackstock. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. So do we go on to item 8, Counsel? Thank you. Item A, Gordon and Suter Clark. Mr. Palmer.
You want to join us up front?
Okay.
Let's all go up front if you folks can. We'll all supervise.
Thank you.
Captain.
(Inaudible). Suter's parents like to join? You guys are welcome to come up front. Tonight we have a resolution here for Gordon Suter Clark. And Gordon Suter's brother cannot be in attendance tonight. He's playing golf at Bretton High School. They had a match this evening. It says, "At the business meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, held on September 17th, 2019, in the General District Courtroom of the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, a following resolution was presented and adopted. Gordon Suter Clark are Pennsylvania County residents and are the sons of Tim and Gretchen Clark of the Callens, Bretton district. Gordon and Suter both attend Bretton High School. The Clark brothers attended the National Junior Angus Show in Louisville, Kentucky from July 14th to July 20th, 2019. Fifteen-year-old Suter showed Selorm Rest Sandy, 8018, which was a grand champion owned female. His winning heifer is a January 2018 daughter of Culver and Primo, 5153, and was first named junior champion in Division Number 7. Seventeen-year-old Gordon tied with Bryce Fitzgerald of West Grove, Pennsylvania, for the Silver Pitcher Award. This award is given to the exhibitor that has accumulated the most points throughout the week-long show. Gordon showed in the steer, cow, calf, pair, and the heifers division, and his points added up to claim the Silver Pitcher Award. Gordon's heifer SCC SCH Phyllis 849 also won the owned junior champion heifer in Division Number 1, and SCC SCH Phyllis 890 won the owned heifer, calf, champion, Division Number 3. The Clark brothers have been going to shows for approximately 10 years, starting years ago at the local Pennsylvania Cazwell Youth Livestock Association Show. They attend 10 to 15 cattle shows per year. This is their fifth time showing at the National Junior Angus. Throughout their hard work and dedication, the Clark brothers were able to claim these admirable awards at the Junior National Angus Show. The Clark brothers have performed admirably, bringing recognition not only to themselves, but to their family, their school, and the county. So be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its congratulations to Gordon Suter Clark for their wins at the National Junior Angus Show, given under my hand the 17th day of September 2019, Joe Davis, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Congratulations. So, not only is this a great thing for me to come up here to show you guys what the Callens, Bretton district has for their agricultural in their cattle breed, but this is my family. My brother and sister-in-law, and Suter's my nephew. So this is more even just a special night for me. But I tell you, if my children couldn't be here tonight, but if they were, they would say, "These two boys are their heroes." And that's the truth about it. How many times a week do you feed your animals?
Every day.
What's the earliest?
6:00 to 6:30.
6:00 to 6:30 a.m. Gordon and Suter in the barn feeding their animals, and what time of night?
(Inaudible).
Yep. These boys go to the barn before they even start their school day, then they end it in the barn before they go home. So the amount of work, the dedication, the sacrifice is just amazing, and I get to see it firsthand, and I'm just so proud of them, more proud of who they are. I came into the family, had no idea of what showing cows and goats and sheep, all the different breeds that they showed, what it was about. But it's a lot of sacrifice involved, a lot of hard work, and it truly just makes them into a great, well-rounded individual. So, congratulations.
Wait a minute, before you leave, anything you'd like to say, young man? I like the boots because I think of, oh, the young man's, the guy that sings, "He's gone country." Do you have anything to say?
It's a lot of hard work, dedication, and I'm very grateful. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. I'm proud of you. I'm glad, well, I think all our youth should have a chance to follow behind cows and goats and chickens and everything for a curriculum of, I would say, eight years, because they would be a whole lot better equipped for society when they do go to college. Well, I thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Bye, young lady.
All right, this time, can we have the Bretton High School Beta Club team, the national winning team, up front, please? And again, if their parents like to join, you're more than welcome to, and any staff officials from Bretton High School. All right, tonight we have a resolution here. It says, "At the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, a following resolution was adopted honoring Bretton High School's Beta Club. The National Beta Club is the largest independent nonprofit educational youth organization in America. For more than 80 years, it has prepared today's students to be tomorrow's leaders. Between the junior beta, which is grades four through eight, senior beta, which is grades nine through 12, the Beta Club has helped nearly 7 million students learn to make a life for themselves, and since 1991 has awarded over $6 billion in scholarships. There are now more than 500,000 active members and more than 8,750 clubs nationally and internationally. Bretton High School students must have a 3.5 GPA to be invited to join the Beta Club and must maintain a 3.2 GPA to remain a member. Students are also required to complete at least 25 years, 25 hours, you know, to sign up for it, 25 hours of community service per semester, which includes things such as community trunking tree at Halloween, participating in book buddies at the elementary school, or raising money for different families in need. Bretton High School Beta Club traveled to Oklahoma City on June 20th, 2019, to compete at the National Beta Convention. Bretton's team that competed in engineering competition was comprised of Kaylee Works, Eden Elconich, Brendan Myers, and Xander Burchard. In the competition, they had to work together to follow the invention's prompt. They had at least five steps. They had at least five items that were required to be used in the invention, as well as other approved items that could be used. Many of these materials were household items such as thread, tubing, zip ties, magnets, and other things. Their prompt was to use as many of the five required materials as they could in their invention, but mandatory was at least to use three. For the two-hour competition, the team used the materials to turn on a calculator. The judges based their scores on the complexity of the team's process, creativity, critical thinking, and communication. Throughout their hard work and determination, these students won first place in the engineering competition. So let it be resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors thus hereby express their deepest congratulations and admiration to the Bretton High School Beta Club for its great accomplishment in the national competition, given under my hand the 17th day of September, 2019, Joe B. Davis. I just want to say, you know, I think we have seven seats right here, and I think we have four students, but they spend more time in this room than we do sometimes by all the awards you guys win. We're just so proud of everything you do for the school, for your communities, for your families, and it just shows that the future is very bright in Pennsylvania County. Thank you. Congratulations. Ms. Kayla has an individual certificate for each of you.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor just screws in tight. Here we go. One, two, three. Three.
I would like to say that that Beta operation there, I appreciate their club and their activities. I also appreciate their creativity and how they could take certain things, and they could cause, I believe, a calculator to come on. We need you guys to come in and watch our meetings, because I think you could really help us a lot. Really can some of our light, my light on, because I appreciate that, and I think it's extraordinary. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, Resolution 2019-09-03. Carl Stahl, Resolution of Appreciation. Mr. Stahl, I didn't even know you were here. You slipped in underwears. I didn't catch the tie as usual, but I do, I do, I do like the glasses.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
It's good to see you, sir.
Come right on up there and stand. Let me see if we can honor you today.
Yes, sir.
See if I can get my vocabulary correct. Virginia, "At the business meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, the Board held in the General District Courtroom of the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition in Chatham, Virginia, on Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, a following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas Carl Stahl was the first president and CEO of the Dan River Regional Foundation, the RF, and served from August 2007 until July 2019. And whereas Dr. Stahl led the DRF, which promotes innovation and long-term transformation, I like that term, to enhance economic development, education, and wellness in the Dan River region. And whereas Dr. Stahl's leadership helped realize many improvements to Pennsylvania's quality of life, economic development, education, and infrastructure, and general health and welfare. And whereas DRF's consistent and ongoing support of the Old Dominion Agricultural Foundation is a result of Dr. Stahl's vision that agriculture is a critical element of the region's economic prosperity. And whereas in 2013, the DRF funded an award to build the Ramsey Memorial Medical Center in Bretton, helping bring much-needed medical access and care to a significant segment of the region. And whereas under Dr. Stahl's leadership, the RF helped establish the county's award-winning park system, the Pennsylvania County Community Center, and the revitalization of Wayside Park. And whereas in 2014, the DRF funded the Pennsylvania County School STEM Academy, which was developed to increase the number of students pursuing STEM career opportunities. And whereas in 2018, the DRF funded the Precision Machine Facility Expansion. Said grant was awarded to build a 13,700 square foot expansion. Phenomenal. And the Gene Haas Center at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research to serve as a rapid-launch space to help recruit advanced manufacturers to this region. And whereas Dr. Stahl has given unselfishly of his time, and we know that, and efforts for the betterment of Pennsylvania County, now be it resolved, that the Board express their sincere appreciation to Dr. Stahl for the noble dedication of his time towards the development and advancement of the county and this region. And be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Stahl on behalf of the Board, given under my hand this day of September 2019, Mr. Joe B. Davis, Chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say, Doc?
For 12 years, I got to lead DRF, but DRF's work and its accomplishments are all done in partnership with others. And Pennsylvania County has been one of DRF's most important partners across a whole array of areas. So I greatly appreciate this award, but basically, I'm holding up a mirror back to the county for all the great things that you have done and you continue to do and will continue to do. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Here's some trouble, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you. Commissioner, so sure.
Yes, sir. Grand, we want a picture.
Picture.
Get a picture with you. I do like that nautical term that you get where people know that that's the Navy.
My followers of 27.
Here we go. One, two, three.
Item 8, E Suicide Prevention Project Presentation. D?
Justin Price.
Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Just follow the directions, all you have to do. I do them as a last resort. Youth Commission Introduction, Mr. Justin Price.
I just want to say, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight. Again, my name's Justin Price. I'm the Recreation Program Coordinator for Pennsylvania County Parks and Recreation, and I also serve as the Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission. As Chairman of the Youth Commission, I would like to state our mission and introduce our 2019 and 2020 members. The primary mission of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission is to act as a voice for the Pennsylvania County youth, serve as a link between students, elected county officials, and the Board of Supervisors. This year, we have grown our youth commission from six members last year to 13 members this year, so we're really excited about that. Unfortunately, due to school activities, we only have seven of them here tonight, but I would like to introduce everyone, and then I'm going to have these kind of young ladies and gentlemen come stand up and have a picture. So as I call your name, come on up, and we're going to get a picture. So Lyra Slattery is a Tunstall High School freshman. Addison Hunsucker, Tunstall High School sophomore. Miranda Cochran, Tunstall High School. She's a junior. Kendall Moore, Tunstall High School. She's also a junior. Savannah Reed, Tunstall High School, junior. Joshua Neal, Tunstall High School, junior. Ivy McLean, Tunstall High School. She is a senior. Carrington Brooks, he is from Tunstall High School. He is a senior. Jocelyn Lippford is from Bretton High School, and she is a senior. Michaela Clement is from Dan River High School. She is a freshman. Courtney Fitz is from Dan River High School. She is a sophomore. Savannah Bose is from Dan River High School. She is a senior. And then Canetria Turain is from Chatham High School, and she is a senior as well. And the one good thing we have this year is we have all four high schools represented in our youth commission, and we're excited about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. (Applause). Thank you. You guys come over here. Here, please. You guys, one more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price, and all of your staff doing a great job. Item E, Suicide Prevention Project Presentation, Mr. Christopher C. Slim.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield the time to Ms. Bowles here, who is one of our great employees that works behind the radio down in the 911 center that y'all don't get to see very often. She had requested some time to talk about a project that she's personally involved in, I think it's of a real positive thing for our center, for her. And she also, she informs me her son's with her tonight, learning how government works firsthand.
We homeschool. This is a field trip.
I'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
Holly Bowles, I have been with the county for a little over 11 years now in 911 dispatch. Things in our community have changed a lot in the last 11 years that I've been here. When I started working for 911, we very rarely got a call for suicide. We very rarely got calls for emergency committal orders. We rarely got calls even for overdoses. You just didn't get them. It was, it was more of a domestic issue than anything else. And I know in the last year, we've had a lot of heartache and sadness in our community. We've had more and more suicides, homicides. We have lots and lots of ECOs and TDOs that our officers are dealing with every day. We have a lot of children in our community that are going through mental health issues and suffering. For me personally, I suffer with my own issues. Part of how I deal with it in my spare time, I draw pictures of butterflies, and I post them on Facebook with my personal story. And what this has done is to help bring awareness that there are a multitude of people in our community, in our world, that suffer with mental health issues, whether it is from financial problems, loss, illness, being picked on in school. Mental health does not discriminate. It doesn't matter if you're a child. It doesn't matter if you're the elderly. We all deal with life differently. We cope differently. I'm here tonight, my, part of my platform is to help children know that they are enough. I have a 12-year-old son. We homeschool. When in public school, he was picked on a lot, and he'd never felt like he was enough. His friends that I talk to still, they all will tell you, "I just don't feel like I'm enough. I'm not pretty enough. I'm not smart enough. I'm not skinny enough. Not popular enough." And even as adults, a lot of us feel like we are not enough, that we don't do the right thing enough, we don't say the right thing. So I have started a mental health awareness initiative. Two pieces of my artwork were chosen by the owners of Tyler Flower Shop in Bretton, and they made signs, and they went up on the storefront of their building last month. This weekend, September the 21st, 10 o'clock in the morning, at Tyler Flower Shop, that address is 318 South Main Street, if anybody would be able to attend. We are having a dedication for the two signs that were done. One of them is being dedicated to the veterans. 22-plus a day in our country die from suicide. The owner of Tyler Flower Shop's son, he was in our county, committed suicide in 2017. So this was a personal thing for the owners of the flower shop to get involved in this and help raise awareness. Those two signs that were put up, they both have the National Suicide Prevention phone numbers, hotline numbers on them. We want people to see it and to know that they're not alone. They're needed. Somebody loves them, and that they are enough. And even if it's just the kids that just see pretty little butterflies on the building, that's okay, too. It's something to make them smile. So like I said, this weekend, Saturday at 10 o'clock- This year, we have grown our Youth Commission from six members last year to 13 members this year, so we're really excited about that. Unfortunately, due to school activities, we only have seven of them here tonight. But I would like to introduce everyone, and then I'm going to have these kind young ladies and gentlemen come stand up and have a picture. So as I call your name, come on up, and we're going to get a picture. So Lyra Slattery is a Tunstall High School freshman. Addison Hunzucker, Tunstall High School sophomore. Miranda Cochran, Tunstall High School, she's a junior. Kendall Moore, Tunstall High School, she's also a junior. Savannah Reed, Tunstall High School, junior. Joshua Neal, Tunstall High School, junior. Ivy McLean, Tunstall High School, she is a senior. Carrington Brooks, he is from Tunstall High School, he is a senior. Jocelyn Lippford is from Gretna High School, and she is a senior. Michaela Clement is from Dan River High School, she is a freshman. Courtney Fitz is from Dan River High School, she is a sophomore. Savannah Bose is from Dan River High School, she is a senior. And then Canetria Turain is from Chatham High School, and she is a senior as well. And the one good thing we have this year is we have all four high schools represented in our Youth Commission, and we're excited about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price, and all of your staff, doing a great job. Item E Suicide Prevention Project Presentation, Mr. Christopher C. Slim.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield the time to Ms. Bowles here, who is one of our great employees that works behind the radio down in the 911 center that y'all don't get to see very often. She had requested some time to talk about a project that she's personally involved in, I think it's of a real positive thing for our center and for her. And she also, she informs me her son's with her tonight, learning how government works firsthand.
We homeschool. This is a field trip.
I'll turn it over to her, thank you.
Holly Bowles, I have been with the county for a little over 11 years now in 911 Dispatch. Things in our community have changed a lot in the last 11 years that I've been here. When I started working for 911, we very rarely got a call for suicide. We very rarely got calls for emergency committal orders. We rarely got calls even for overdoses. You just didn't get them. It was more of a domestic issue than anything else. And I know in the last year, we've had a lot of heartache and sadness in our community. We've had more and more suicides, homicides. We have lots and lots of ECOs and TDOs that our officers are dealing with every day. We have a lot of children in our community that are going through mental health issues and suffering. For me personally, I suffer with my own issues. Part of how I deal with it in my spare time, I draw pictures of butterflies, and I post them on Facebook with my personal story. And what this has done is to help bring awareness that there are a multitude of people in our community, in our world, that suffer with mental health issues, whether it is from financial problems, loss, illness, being picked on in school. Mental health does not discriminate. It doesn't matter if you're a child, it doesn't matter if you're the elderly. We all deal with life differently, we cope differently. I'm here tonight, part of my platform is to help children know that they are enough. I have a 12-year-old son, we homeschool. When in public school, he was picked on a lot, and he'd never felt like he was enough. His friends that I talk to still, they all will tell you, I just don't feel like I'm enough. I'm not pretty enough, I'm not smart enough, I'm not skinny enough, not popular enough. And even as adults, a lot of us feel like we are not enough, that we don't do the right thing enough, we don't say the right thing. So I have started a mental health awareness initiative. Two pieces of my artwork were chosen by the owners of Tyler Flower Shop in Gretna, and they made signs, and they went up on the storefront of their building last month. This weekend, September the 21st, 10 o'clock in the morning, at Tyler Flower Shop, that address is 318 South Main Street, if anybody would be able to attend. We are having a dedication for the two signs that were done. One of them is being dedicated to the veterans. 22-plus a day in our country die from suicide. The owner of Tyler Flower Shop's son, he was in our county, committed suicide in 2017. So this was a personal thing for the owners of the flower shop to get involved in this and help raise awareness. Those two signs that were put up, they both have the National Suicide Prevention phone numbers, hotline numbers on them. We want people to see it and to know that they're not alone, they're needed, somebody loves them, and that they are enough. And even if it's just the kids that just see pretty little butterflies on the building, that's okay too, it's something to make them smile. So like I said, this weekend, Saturday at 10 o'clock in the morning, I am here to officially invite Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Smitherman, I'd love to have you too, to come out and support this initiative. I don't know very many people that can stand up and say, "I don't have any mental health issues, I don't have loved ones that have mental health issues, everything's good in my life." If those people exist, I'd really love to meet them, I think I could learn something. But we are trying to raise awareness for the signs and symptoms of mental health. Most of the people that I have been in contact with in the last six months, many of them are people who have lost family to suicide. And the first thing they tell me is, "I didn't know they had a problem, I didn't know what to look for, I didn't know what they were going through." So we are trying to make other people aware of what those signs and symptoms are. Most people with mental health problems, especially when they get to the point of being suicidal, will not ask for help. You have to be the one to reach out. So that's what we're doing, is we are trying to reach out to the community in hopes of saving a life. So I would love to have you guys enjoy us, join us, media will be present, we will have refreshments. It's not going to be a party for sure, but it will be about awareness. One of my speakers is Terry Sharp, the walking Marine. He will be here to speak about veteran suicide, the 22-plus a day. One of my speakers is 10-year-old Jessica Saunders from Gretna. Her mom approached me, and she actually volunteered to speak to the community about bullying and how it affects the kids in the school system. I'll be speaking. I am no public speaker, so I always apologize upfront. We may have other speakers, we're not positive just yet, but like I said, I would love to have the Board of Supervisors, the county, to help with the awareness in this. I know that our first responders is another big thing for me. Even sitting in dispatch, unless you sit there, you have no idea what we hear. It hurts, it's sad, you don't forget it, our officers. If you could just close your eyes and think of the horror that they see when they get on scene to some of this stuff, our fire and rescue. Are they being taken care of mentally? Because in the words of my 12-year-old, "I think we hear and see too much sadness, and we're not supposed to have to do that." So that's what I have for you guys tonight. So like I said, I would love to have you guys come represent the county in helping to bring mental health awareness to the community. This project is starting in Gretna, but we are in the process of spreading it however far we can make it. It wouldn't hurt my feelings for my silly little butterflies to go all over the place. So, but that's what I have. Thank you for listening to me.
Mr. Smitherman, would you like one of these?
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. I don't know that I could have the heart to do that particular job. I hear I'm on the TV. I'd be too busy trying to get out behind that phone and going after myself, so thankful for you guys that do the job you do. Item number nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body, not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of an aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Moving on. Public hearings number 10.
No.
Say again?
We have several people signed up to speak.
I don't have the list.
I've got it. The first one we have is Mr. Tommy Motley.
Oh, I'm Tommy Motley, from McCallan's Gretna District, and I just want to address the board because y'all have got some things coming up in the future as far as how you're going to raise money. And I'm a dairy farmer, landowner in the county, and back when we were looking at the budget a couple of years ago, the figures came out. For the money that you received in land use, for every dollar you received, the agriculture community received 25 cents worth of services. So you made 75 cents off of every dollar that I paid you, even with land use. In saying that, we've heard the lady just speak about the stress that's out there. The agriculture sector right now is about as stressful as it has ever been. And I know you're going to be looking at other revenues for money. So I would just like for y'all to look at every avenue, and that's the thing about it, our structure is, you have not very many options. So anything that you can do to help your largest industry in this county. I was on a thing with PBS, they were looking at Pennsylvania County here recently, did an interview for them, and the dairy sector, there aren't but five dairies in the county, but those five dairies employ over 100 people. Then when you look at that denominator of a seven-to-one factor, look at what that does for us. And I'm glad to see the Clark boys recognized tonight from the agriculture sector, and Mr. Stahlberg also, I was on the foundation board, Old Dominion Foundation Board in 2006 when it was a dream. And that dream came from the agriculture sector. They've done it other places, why can't we do it? And they took it upon themselves to do it, and I think they had a dog show here a couple of weeks ago, there were more people from out of state than there were from in-state. So whatever y'all can do to relieve some of the pain or not to inflict any more harm on us, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motley.
The next we have signed up to speak is Mr. Will Pace.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman. It's been a while. I'm sorry I've been absent to come to these board meetings, though, I've been busy, but it's good to be back. My name is Will Pace, I'm resident of the Chatham Blairs District, and I come here virtually every two years, only speak on one item, though, it's a big pet peeve of mine, and maybe you know what that pet peeve is. It's campaign season, we got four of the seven Board Supervisors up, four of the five constable officer seats up, all three soar conservation board seats up. But once again, when you have a campaign season, you see campaign yard signs up. I'd like to remind everyone here, one simple rule, don't put your campaign yard signs in the V dot public right-of-way, it's against the law. So what is the right-of-way? It's complicated, based on which road, though, but here's some rule thumbs here about what the right-of-way is. If you see a road sign, your typical road sign, stop sign, yield sign, street sign, whatever, those road signs are in the right-of-way. So don't put your yard sign next to a road sign, you're breaking the law. The, in between the edge of the road or gutter, that's the right-of-way, don't put it there. The embankment hill beside the road, that hill is the right-of-way. The kudzu, that's the right-of-way. The median, that's the center of the right-of-way, so don't even think of putting your yard signs in the median. But my point is this, though, I mean, there's so many come up now, though, and I know V dot is taking some of them down, but there are a lot right now on US 29 Business Route in Blairs that are in the right-of-way and need to come down. And there's some people just think they can put their campaign yard signs on the side of the road, that's the right-of-way. Now, if you put it on the other side of a sidewalk or the gutter of the road in your property, that's fine, but if you see a road sign or your post office box or in the median, don't put it there, it's the right-of-way. So I just urge everyone here, who's whether they're a candidate or supporter of their candidates, just put it in your private property, don't put your yard sign, your four-by-four, your four-by-eight in the right-of-way, or I'm going to call V dot, they're going to take it down, if not, I'm going to take it down myself. So I appreciate your time, though, it's my every-two-year little rant on that, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mayor Pace.
Right, next we have Everlena Ross.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't hear anything, something I said again. Good evening, Honorable Chairman Davis, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Smitherman. Thank you all for letting me have this opportunity to speak. I came for three reasons, I'll be brief. One is to tell you that Pennsylvania County Community Action is doing well and good, and we sincerely thank you for your support financially, physically, economically, spiritually. Thank you. So I just want to give you three statistics, and then I'll go to the second reason. Last year, we operate on a physical year from July 1st to June 30th for most programs. For the summer feeding program, which you know only operates when school is out until school starts because hunger is an issue in this area, we served 46,000 meals to kids throughout this area. For the tax season, that is absolutely no cost to any citizen, we did 1,954 taxes returned. And for our Head Start program, we did, we have 242 children, so I just want to let you all know that. I'm just teasing you with that little bit of information because my second reason is to tell you that Pennsylvania County Community Action is celebrating its 54th anniversary. This Thursday night is Drafting Conference Center. I think we mailed each of you an invitation, so I want to personally invite you to our annual dinner meeting. You will meet honorable speakers, and you're just going to find out more about what we do. Your chairperson will be bringing greetings from Pennsylvania County. We so look forward to seeing each of you. If you have not called me and made your reservation, I can take it tonight. That's my second reason. And then the third reason is to thank you all for what you do, and we continue to work together as partners. Because as she said about the suicide, I just got a call the other day about a young lady that just got killed at the Gretna Village Complex. So PCCA is going to look at another program to address suicide and other crimes that affect our youth. Our youth is now, not in the future, they're now. Thank you all, see you all Thursday night, continue the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. I just love her voice when I talk to her on the telephone, sounds like I'm talking to a wonderful animated six-year-old. Her voice does not go with her. Beautiful voice. Yes, ma'am, that's, that's, that is a compliment. I would put you in Disney, I can tell you that, you would do some background work on animation. Yes, ma'am.
The last citizen we have signed up to speak is Mr. Bob Harris.
Bob Harris, Callan's Gretna District. Just want to thank you Board of Supervisors for the work you do on our behalf of the ag community to keep us vital. In reference to the upcoming work session or public hearing that y'all are going to advertise tonight, thank you for adopting Virginia Code in this matter. And as Mr. Motley alluded to earlier on, as you're going through the budget process in the upcoming years and years, I just remember that right now in the ag community, times are tight. We're in an economic downturn in the ag community that I haven't certainly not ever seen in my farming career, which started when I was about 12 years old. Most of us are struggling just to hang on through this. So when you take into consideration that we're the number one agriculture or one of the one industry in Pennsylvania County, as well as we're probably, population-wise, the least represented in the county as far as, you know, the numbers that we have, we're steadily declining. Let's try to make this just a fair situation when we try to balance the budget. We can't do it on real estate alone, we can't do it through implementing taxes such as equipment taxes and that. Just keep that in mind, and, you know, if you ever have any questions about the ag industry, reach out to us, as farmers, as the Farm Bureau. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Now we get to move on to the rezoning public hearing. Is that correct? Thank you. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6, Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Of the citizens of Pennsylvania County, the Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Case number one, public hearing, rezoning case R-190-024. Mr. Sides.
Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
I'll open this public hearing up at 7:47 PM.
Case R-19024, Plowler Properties Incorporated have petitioned to rezone 34.398 acres located off State Road 626, Smith Mountain Road, on Waterlock Road in the Callan's Gretna Election District, from A1 Agricultural District to RPD Residential Plan Unit Development District, to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent parcels already zoned RPD for future development. The planning commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to RPD, then all uses listed under Section 35-294 are permitted. Staff Summers, in closing, your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Eric Plowler is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Mr. Sides, for giving me the opportunity tonight to address you. My name, again, is Eric Plowler, and I am President of Plowler Properties Incorporated. I am a real estate developer at Smith Mountain Lake. We have been developing a community called Sanctuary Bay for several years. I'm not sure if any of y'all have had the opportunity to go up there and take a look at it, but it's a very nice community. We have lighted streets, community water system, and high-quality construction throughout the neighborhood. The existing homes we have in there are valued from $700,000 on the low end to more than $3 million on the high end. So it's a really nice community, and what we're proposing, as you can see from our plans, is to extend that community with two new sections, one called Sanctuary Village and one called Sanctuary Point. We think this is a very good opportunity for us and Pennsylvania County. This is the last large tract of land in Pennsylvania County that borders Smith Mountain Lake, and we're proposing to open it up and to bring new people to Pennsylvania County. You know, everything I've heard here tonight, you know, from, in every county, it's like this, you know, everyone's looking for revenue. And I just did some quick figures, I was always listening to everyone, you know, tonight and thinking, you know, this, I think it's a golden goose, you know. The lake is, you know, Pennsylvania County only has a small portion of it, we're hoping to maximize what you have left. You know, if you just do quick figures, we've got 65 lots that we're proposing, all waterfront lots, you know, I can't promise anything, but if history- lots, you know, I can't promise anything, but if history is any indicator, you know, we're probably gonna have an average, you know, home value of a million bucks apiece. That's $65 million in assessed value. You do quick math, that's $300,000 a year in tax revenue coming into Pennsylvania County. It's gotta help. So, we, you know, ask for your support, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything I can.
Thank you, Mr. Plyler.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak to this case tonight.
All right, well, we'll close this meeting at 7:50. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-19-024, I'd like to make a motion that rezone 34.398 acres from A1 Agricultural District to RPD Residential Plan Unit Development District.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Farmers. Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Plyler, thank you. Those who would like to stay after we rezone your case, if we rezone it, in either direction, you can leave, feel free to leave. If not, you can, we'd be glad to have you. All right, moving on to case number two, public hearing rezoning case R-19-025. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing for case two.
I'll open this public hearing up at 7:52 AM.
Case R-19-
PM. Pardon me, Mr. Sides.
Certainly. Case R-19-025, Roy and Phyllis Nicholson have petitioned to rezone 13.72 acres located on State Road 763, Weatherford Drive, in the Stanton River Election District, from RE Residential Estates District to A1 Agricultural District, to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent parcels zoned A1. The planning commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff Summers enclosing the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Roy Nicholson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Nicholson.
Good evening.
I have nothing to add, just, we are requesting the rezoning in order to be consistent with the surrounding properties.
Okay, Mr. Nicholson, have a seat.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak on this case.
I'll close this public hearing at 7:53 PM.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-19-025, I move that we rezone from RE Residential Estates District to A1 Agricultural District on 13.72 acres located on State Road 763, Weatherford Drive, in the Stanton River Election District. It's, this move is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Warren. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Nicholson, your property's been rezoned.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening. Case number three, rezoning R-19-026. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing for case three.
I'll open this public hearing up at 7:54 PM.
In case R-19-026, Russell Eads has petitioned to rezone 1.256 acres from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, and 4.533 acres from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to A1 Agricultural District, to bring the existing uses into compliance and to be consistent with the property adjacently zoned A1 currently. The parcels are located on State Road 668, Gretna Road, in the Stanton River Election District. The planning commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to R1 and A1, then all uses listed under the respective sections are permitted uses. Staff Summers enclosing the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Russell Eads is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Eads.
Thank y'all. I don't have anything to add to this, just like to get it rezoned where I can take care of the property to be sold and to rezone the other land according with my, what I've already got there. And the main thing is to get it rezoned where I can sell a house.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Eads.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak to this case.
I'll close this public hearing at 7:56 PM.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-19-026, I move that we rezone from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District on 1.256 acres. We'd also like to move that we rezone from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to A1 on 4.5, 4.533 acres, part of a 5.80 acre parcel shown as part of GPN number 255-889369, located off Gretna Road in the Stanton River District. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That's a mouthful. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Eads, your property's been rezoned. Took you a while, but it's been rezoned. Thank you.
Well, Steve, can you wait just a minute? I wanna say a few words.
Yeah.
I'm not running for reelection, so this is not a political speech. I just wanna say something quickly. The Eads family, Mr. Eads recently lost his brother, but the Eads family has been, for generations, a rock of the hurt Gretna community, and they are some of the hardest-working people I've ever met, each one of them. And I just wanna, and this is just one more example, this is a mobile home park that you've kept up for years, you run a plumbing, plumbing business, all the work that you and your brothers do in our community. I just wanna say thank you from a public body for what y'all do. And it's the American way, and I admire you. I've always looked up to you and your family, and thank you for what you do over there.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Case number four, rezoning case R-19-027. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing for case four.
All right, I'll open this public hearing up at 7:58 PM.
Case R-19-027, Jay and Lydia Landrum have petitioned to rezone a total of 62.45 acres located off State Road 1510, Slaughter Avenue, in the Westover Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow for the subdivision of the properties for family members. The planning commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff Summers enclosing your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Laurie and John Tort are here to represent the petition.
Good evening. My name is William Landrum, that's my sister-in-law and brother-in-law, but we're rezoning our farm so my son and his wife can build a house next to us, so that's why we want it rezoned, but nothing else needs to be added.
All right, thank you, Mr. Landrum, you can sit, you can have a seat.
Mr. Chairman, no one else has spoken, signed up to speak on this case.
All right, I'll close this public hearing at 8:00 PM. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve case R-19-027, to rezone a total of 62.45 acres to two parcels of land from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. The parcels are located off Slaughter Road or Avenue in the Westover District.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Barber. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Landrum, your property's been rezoned. Thank you, have a good evening. Moving on to item B, other public hearings. Each person addressing the Board under public hearings shall step up, give his or her name and district, and his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address for three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the Board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent the chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Public hearing number one, fire and rescue ordinance, Mr. Christopher C. Slim.
Good evening. So, this is the long-awaited fire and rescue ordinance that's been in the works for several months. As you know, we appointed an ad hoc committee several months ago to work on this, and at that time, I reached out to Chief Bailey here, who was actually one of the folks that was on the committee that came around, did the assessment, before, study, excuse me, before my time, and he helped moderate us through this whole thing. And I'm gonna step aside for a minute, I wanted to let him speak and give you some perspective from his point of view about this for a moment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, fellow Board members and staff, as he said, my name is Walter Bailey, and I have had the pleasure of serving many roles for the last 46 years across the Commonwealth of Virginia in leadership in fire and EMS, and I did have the pleasure of leading the study team, I think, four years ago here in the county. Chris reached out to me about a year ago to moderate the group. Mr. Scars was on the group, as well as five members of Fire and EMS here through the county. I ended up coming to your county a total of 17 times for meetings with either that group or the Fire and EMS, you know, commission or Fire and EMS-
Association.
-association here. We started this off at the beginning, we wanted this to be unanimous, not only in our committee, but across the departments that serve Pennsylvania County. Over the course of the past year, I attended three association meetings. The first one was in November to brief everybody as to what we were gonna do and seek input. In the early, late winter, I guess it was, I came back, I wanna say it's in a February timeframe, and presented a draft document to the Fire and Rescue Association, took several comments, you know, from them, you know, at that time, and again, left my contact information if anybody wanted me to contact them personally, me personally, I was more than willing to discuss it with them through email, text, telephone call, and I also offered to come to individual departments to discuss, you know, concerns that they may have. I received no additional comments after the February meeting. We continued to work through the spring to get to the final draft that we are presenting to you tonight. I presented this at the August meeting of the Fire and Rescue Association. We did tweak one sentence, you know, in the, in the draft document, and afterwards, it was approved by unanimous vote. I would like to applaud the Board of Supervisors for being proactive in this. In my role at the state, I travel all over, I meet with many counties, and unfortunately, they wait too late until the volunteer system is in ruins before they want to address. So, I think this document will go a long way to enhance service, protect the volunteer organizations that you have here, and give a higher level of service in the long run to the departments, the men and women that are members there and serve your county. You know, I, I think this also will serve as a model for other counties to adopt that, you know, are willing to be forward thinkers, you know, with the volunteers that, you know, serve their communities as well. So, I can't thank you enough for stepping up to the plate and being proactive on this, and I would urge you to adopt, you know, this ordinance, and I will be glad to answer any questions that I can of you.
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up, so you will need to open and then close the public hearing and then ask any questions to this gentleman and then vote on this.
I'll open this public hearing up at 8:05. Now, I closed this public hearing because no one signed up at 8:05. In fact, I was supposed to open it up before they got up here, is that correct?
You're doing great.
Yeah. That's gonna help your evaluations in the future. Thank you, Counselor. No one signed up? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren? Okay. Is there any discussion? That's right, you guys leave me out here on a limb, that's okay, I'm used to that.
He wants to make a motion now?
Yes, sir, I'm waiting on it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the fire and rescue ordinance as presented.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Scars makes the motion. Mr. Warren seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the ad hoc committee for getting us put through this process. I also wanna give special thanks to Walt and Chris, their mediation skills were outstanding, and every meeting we had was stress-free, no, no major issues came up that they couldn't handle, and we couldn't have got it done without you two guys ramrodding this through for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Slim, I think this has come before us once or twice before, and I've always asked the same question. I mean, to your knowledge, I mean, everyone's seen this, everyone's signed off on this, this is in good standing with the fire community and rescue?
The association as a whole has, I can't, going back, I can't tell you every department was there that night, but the majority, I think there was two, maybe three, that were not represented. I've not had questions, I've talked to some of those folks aside, made sure, you know, especially some of the ones I knew don't always get involved, trying to make sure they saw it in any questions we had, so, as far as I know, yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I just had a comment, this must be the one, 'cause at the ninth hour, every time we get ready to do this, I get calls, I didn't get any today, so, we must be there. I usually start getting calls from 5:00 till I leave the house telling me what they don't like, so, I didn't get any today, so, must be good.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Scars and a second by Mr. Warren. No further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Slim, and Walter. Thank you.
We would've never done this without Chief Bailey, I gotta tell you, he was huge, huge. We have a big debt of gratitude, so, he helped us on some of the sticking points and knew what to say at the right time to say it, so, that was, he right, he kept down any dust, I think, so, I appreciate it.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I do wanna call attention to Chief Bailey's interest in our community. He was part of the 2015 study that has led to what we're doing today, and we are trying our best to follow that plan. This ordinance you adopted tonight is a product of that plan, and I just wanna personally thank Chief Bailey for all the interest he's shown toward Pennsylvania County, and there's absolutely no way we could repay him for the effort and personal sacrifice that he's put into making our system better, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to item two, provisions to the Pennsylvania County Code, running-at-large restrictions in designated areas. Mr. Jay Vaden-Hunt, the Esquire.
Mr. Chairman, you can open the public hearing, and then I'm gonna pass this off to Mr. Slim, 'cause he's in charge of animal control.
I'll open this public hearing up at 8:09. Mr. Slim?
Thank you. I'm working on a master's, I should be working on a law degree, I'm beginning to think, so, you know, we've had several discussions about the running, animals running at large, or basically pets running at large in the county, and we've worked on this ordinance as a group, myself and Vaden and Animal Control, several, several months on this, and I know we've presented, I believe, to legislative committee as well. legislative committee as well. So what changes we have proposed are to bring this, I think, more in line of what we're looking for in today's society. Those changes would basically be at least 75% of property owners in a R1-zoned area would have to sign off or be in favor of this. Only one owner per property shall be counted towards the above required percentage. The petitioner shall be required to pay fully for any and all advertising costs associated with the public hearing on their petition. As you know, there's some cost to these things when we do public hearings. Upon receipt of such petition, the board shall consider whether petition is signed by at least 75% of the property owners. And then basically toward the end, if the board approves the petition, the petitioner shall pay the county for all costs associated with producing and installing the no dogs running at large signs that we put up in these areas. I think we're talking with Animal Control, this is a much easier ordinance to be able to enforce and also to have those designated areas. So we present it like that, and I think that hopefully we'll meet with your approval.
Mr. Chairman, we had one individual sign up to speak, and that person is Aubrey Myers.
I'm Mr. Chairman, Board members, I'm Aubrey Myers. I live in the Gretna District. I'm probably six months too late in coming before the board on this, but I just saw the notice in the paper last week, and I started reading into it, went to the county website, and read the code, running at large restrictions in designated areas. I think rather than divide the county in designated areas, the entire county should be restricted area with no dogs running at large. Now, the reason I say that, I ride a bicycle between 2,000 and 3,000 mile a year, and I've ridden in seven states this year. The only place that I've had trouble with dogs is in Pennsylvania County. I got bit recently down below Gretna Ozine Road, just up from Chalk Level Road. And about three months ago, I rode from Gretna to Climax over to Rondo Highway 57. I got chased by 11 dogs within a 32-mile ride, and I carry some spray with me to defend myself from dogs. After talking to the dog warden, after getting bit, I started to carry my gun, but I didn't. But anyway, I had to stop at the Climax store up there and refill my container of spray because I used it 11 times within, you know, a 32-mile ride. And a person should be able to ride a bicycle on any road in this county without the fear of being bit by somebody's dog. Now, stray dog, I can understand that. It's nobody responsible for them. But all these dogs that chase me belong to someone because they come right out of the yard, and if I ride them all, I'm going to be chased by the same dogs I was chased by last week. So these are not stray dogs. So in the future, now I don't know what's on the agenda for as voting tonight or whatever, but in the future, I urge you to look at making the whole county a restricted area for as dogs running wild, because, you know, people should be able to run, jog, walk, participate in any physical fitness without the fear of a dog coming into a public road. The dog owner should be held responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
That's the only person who has signed up to speak.
All right, I close this public hearing at 8:14 PM. All right, what's the nature of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the proposed changes to Pennsylvania County Code 2-222, running at large restrictions in designated areas as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
I'll just say for the, you know, the public, we had a case come through here a few months ago, and I think we saw some areas for improvement to tighten up some policies, and I think that's what this was doing here. And again, I'm on the legislative committee, and we've met and spoke on it several times, so I think this is, like Mr. Slim said earlier, bringing this up to maybe current time, because I think this could be an outdated code, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Chairman, before I forget, Kalen here was a big help to us with this as well, and I left her out a little bit ago, but she was a huge help to us on stuff and kept us straight, too, I should say. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, Budget Amendments Appropriation. Ms. Kimberly G. Vanderheide.
Thank you. I hope I won't be too long tonight. We have about six amendments that need to be made to the county's 1920 budget. Actually, one of them is just a request from the Health Department to use unutilized funds. So I'll start with that one. So each year, you all approve a budget amount that we send to the Health Department for Danville in Pennsylvania County. This year, it was $587,781. And we send those funds to the Health Department quarterly. And so at the end of each year, if they have monies remaining, they are responsible for sending those back to the county. So these are funds, the 19 funds are already at the Health Department, and then there are a few funds remaining. They had an estimate that they gave us during the 1920 budget that they would also like to retain instead of sending those back. And what they plan to do with those funds is to use those for basically shingles vaccinations for our community. So $31,000 was the amount from FY19, and $11,819 from FY20. Last year, for FY18, they did refund monies to the county. This was brought back to you all. So they refunded about $60,000 last year. So this is not quite that much, but they are requesting to retain those funds. The second item up for discussion and appropriation tonight is for a CDBG planning grant, and this is for the Gunn Garland Road to do some improvements there, and that is in an amount of $40,000, and it does not require a local match. The third item is for the Virginia Brownfield Restoration and Economic Redevelopment Assistance Fund. That is also a grant in the amount of $99,800, and it's for restoration to the Burlington Industries property in Hurt. And so that money just needs to be appropriated. Samet is doing that work in Hurt at that property. So we just need to make sure that it is available for expenditure, and they are spending that money and drawing it down from us. We have already received half of these funds already. The fourth item is the sale of surplus landfill property appropriation. We were able to sell $16,870 of our old landfill equipment on GovDeals, which is an online program that we use to sell some of our property. And so we would like to reuse those funds to rehabilitate some of our equipment at the landfill, specifically compacters, because we have some that are in bad disrepair, and they need to be repaired. So we would like to appropriate those funds back to the landfill. The fifth item is for WIA. They receive a grant each year for pathways, and I noticed that they had overspent all of their grant funds, and in further investigation, I realized that some of those monies were being utilized by other entities in the community, and they were actually paying WIA to administer some of those programs. And so that money needs to be put back into the grant, because we spent grant funds and actually we received all of the money to cover the program. It was just, it just came in a different format. So that amount is $63,367.78, and that will continue for the coming year, so you will see that one again. The last item, the sixth item, is for the beautification fund. Tonight, you all got an update from Mr. Mark Moore about our signs in the community, and they're beautiful and wonderful, but we have realized in doing those that there's a lot of upfront cost involved in the entrance signs and the sign that was required by VDOT, the landscaping around those signs. We will make those, that fund whole in year two or three, but to begin with, that fund is suffering a little tad. So the executive team met, and our recommendation would be to utilize, we've got some capital money in the building and grounds capital fund, and we would like to utilize $40,000 of those funds just to keep the beautification fund in the black. And so the plan is that when we receive the monies in years two and three, we will repay that building and grounds. So it's really not costing you all anything. It's going to be paid back by our sponsors. So basically, there is no financial impact, per se, other than if you allow the Health Department to maintain their funds, it's just monies that wouldn't come back to us, but they're monies that have already basically been obligated to the Health Department. So staff would recommend that the board would consider these items for approval tonight and for appropriations.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible for us to vote on these one by one? Because I can support some, but there's one I'm not going to support.
All right. So which ones would we like to link up if everybody's in agreement to vote on first? Is that correct, Counselor?
Yeah.
Are we going to?
One, you object to, or so you could just make a motion to approve all of them except one, and we can discuss that one?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve, based on the agenda, items that are listed under 12. A, new business that begin with B, CDBG planning grant appropriation. C, Virginia brownfield restoration. D, sale of surplus. E, WIA pathways. And F, beautification fund grants be approved as submitted.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Warren. For that said motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion is approved and carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do not approve a Health Department approval to use unutilized funds. They should be returned to the county.
Motion made by Mr. Warren for those funds to be returned to the county. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, not as much this item, but we're really quick all the time to give money back or to allow people to carry it over, and every year, we come down and we have budget issues that's been discussed tonight. We had our ag community here discussing with us at length to monitor our budget and be careful about how we expend and don't expend monies so we don't have to go back and start telling everybody we need additional tax increases and all. And at some point in time, we've got to start to say we can't give it back every time, or we can't let you keep it every time. I don't, I'm not saying this is the ideal time necessarily, but at some point in time, it's got to stop.
Mr. Chairman, what are these vaccines for? I'm not familiar with them.
The shingles vaccine, it's for citizens. That's the Shingrix, I think, is the name of the vaccine.
I think it's a new shingles vaccine.
It is. And it's for people over 50, is what they recommend.
And that's what they recommend for everyone, is people over 50, and there are many organizations that can provide these at no cost besides just the Health Department, and there are funds already allocated to the Health Department through state and other funds to cover these costs without them drawing back money that they didn't use in the current budget.
Ms. Vanderheide?
Yes.
I understand the FY19, because that's come and gone, but the FY20 request, isn't that a current? I mean, that's the year.
It is. It is, and it's the first time they've ever sent us a request this soon in the budget to ask for money that we haven't even given them yet. And I don't know if that's to prevent them from having to do it at year end, but I do know that we did increase their budget this year. Last year in 19, they only got $517. This year, it's $578. So I'm just thinking that perhaps they estimate, they overshot their estimate of what they needed locally to draw down their state and federal funds, but I don't think they want to let go of that money to send it back to us. That's the only thing I could think of. And the only reason they gave me that they were going to use the money for were these shingles vaccines. That's the only thing that was, and that was in the documents that were in your board packet. That's all we got, really, for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in agree, I agree with Mr. Warren. I've been saying this for years, that we can't keep spending money and giving everybody back the money they don't spend. But in this case, because we are dealing with vaccines, which could be people's lives, instead of voting no, I'm going to make, offer a substitute motion to table this matter.
I'm good with that.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second the table motion.
In that way, now that we have a second, we can discuss, they can come up here and explain to us.
What they're going to do.
If it's really need.
As part of that, Mr. Blackstock, I'd also like to say that I'd like to see staff dig into this a little more, because sometimes, based on the appropriations, I don't want to be in a situation where we pull back a dollar and we lose three state dollars in our locality. So I'm asking staff to dig in and get all the facts concerning this matter.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this matter. Is that correct?
Yeah, substitute motion.
Substitute motion, yeah.
We have to dispose of this first, and if this passes, we never get back to the initial motion.
Okay, so we're going to vote on a substitute motion?
Correct.
That's what I thought I was doing, but anyway, I do appreciate the overall guidance. So we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 13.
No, 12B.
12B. Oh, pardon me, you're right. Go ahead. That's correct. Go ahead, Mr. Black.
I make a motion to approve the Southern Virginia Mega Park Resolution as presented in the work session.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Warren, and second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Do we have an item C? Okay, appointments. Do we have any appointments? Hearing none, 14. Matters from the work session, public hearing authorization for the amendment to PCC 6-3.1. Public hearing authorization for the amendment to PCC 6-3.1. Mr. Jay Vaden-Hunt, Esquire.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We discussed this at the work session, and previously discussed it at work sessions at legislative committees. County staff is seeking authorization to advertise the attached proposed revisions to Pennsylvania County Code 6-3.1 local tax exemption for a public hearing at October meeting. This change would bring our ordinance in line with the new corresponding state ordinance that was passed into effect on July 1 of this year by the General Assembly. Before any action can take place, we need to have a duly advertised public hearing in October, so that's what the staff is seeking with this matter.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion authorizing county staff to advertise the attached proposed revisions to the Pennsylvania County Code 6-3.1 local county tax exemption for the public hearing for potential action at the October business meeting.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Item number 15, board member reports. Mr. Barber?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Blackstock?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer?
I just made a few notes during the meeting tonight. You know, the comments from Ms. Bowles regarding her suicide prevention project. I just admire someone who sees, you know, to get involved, to see the opportunity to just be a part of the community and, and attack something with the passion that she has is just, just amazing. So I just want to use this time to remind everyone that she said it's this coming Saturday, the 21st, 10:00 AM on Main Street, Grutton at Tyler Flower Shop. And with that being said, also, I just made a couple of notes here. Recognize Mr. Willie Fitzgerald and Mr. and Ms. Angier for their constant involvement in coming to these meetings. I just, really just, we appreciate, you know, coming out and seeing you guys week, month in, month out, or even weekly at some of the committee meetings that we have. Your involvement is just top-notch, so thank you. It really matters to us when we see our community citizens get involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Moving on to Dr. Miller.
The only comment I would have, probably, of course, everybody's aware we're in the election season. And I'd just like to encourage everybody to communicate to all friends, neighbors, and associates to get registered to vote, to participate in the election before the polls close.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Scares?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Warren?
I have one brief thing to say. I attended the State of the Region meeting this morning, and I want to compliment both our Chairman, Mr. Davis, and County Administrator David Smitham for, for presenting, presenting the county in such a positive manner, and it looked really good for the region. And in particular, you all let everyone know what a shining star we have here in Pennsylvania County, and what a great place it is to live and participate. So thank you, gentlemen, very much for a job well done.
Thank you. I only have one. I want to thank all our staff. Mr. Bumper, who held a sign, a, a placard up today. I do appreciate that. He looked so good there. I want to thank all of our staff, Kalen, and Mr. Moore, everybody. County attorneys and county administrators, Ms. Vanderhyde, and on, Mr. Hicks, and on, Mr. Slim. I do appreciate all of the law enforcement. Have I forgotten anybody? Mr. Sides, do you pardon me? I forgot your smiling face this morning. Thank you. The public would never know what has to go in to, just to present one of these meetings. There's a ton of work, and I, I mean that literally. All aspects, all hands on board, unbelievable, and they do it quite often tirelessly. And I do appreciate that, because that means a lot for our smooth operation. We want to thank you for that, because they are the work of bees, and they're, they're here. But we also have those who, like Clarence today, him and his friend, working in the county right there at the county administrator's office. All those employees that are employed in the county that do a job very well. And I thank you. I thank them, and I thank our law enforcement as well. Moving right on, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Smitham, you have anything?
Yes, sir. I just want to express my appreciation to Supervisor Scares, Mr. Slim, and particularly Chief Bailey, and all the members of our public safety team, as well as all of our volunteer fire and rescue leaders. We did finally complete a major step forward in our organization as a county. We care very much about the success of our volunteers, and we care very much about the future service that we will be providing to our citizens. And this ordinance is a tool that we will use to make sure that everyone is cared for in the highest and best manner possible. And I will also say again, as I've done several times, appreciation to the Pet Center and all of its staff. They've had several events lately. Their ongoing raffle for the Coyote Tractor is going extremely well, and we thank you for your support, each supervisor that's helping us sell tickets. That's all I have. Oh, one other thing, we'll be having an all-employee meeting this Friday. Offices will be closed for one hour from 4:00 to 5:00 PM on Friday afternoon for our first of two 2019, no, second, second of two 2019 all-employee meetings. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Smitham, how about it, Counselor?
I have nothing to add.
I declare this meeting adjourned.